Good evening. Welcome to the October 15th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mr. Brock Heath, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Cub Scout PAC Five. Please stand.
Good. Let's go to the break. Father, we come to you here tonight to say thank you for all the blessings, favors, and successes of the summer. God, as we go into fall, continue to please to bless us and allow us to move forward towards our hopes, goals, and dreams. God, we ask you to protect the people that are protecting us, including fires, firemen, EMT, police. Those that are fighting overseas, allow them to destroy the enemies of America and freedom, God, and protect them as they do that. God, we look forward to a good event, meeting here tonight. Anything that we do and say that is in line with what you want us to do, God, favor that, strengthen that. Anything that's out of line with what you want us to do and say, wash that away and make it so that it's not there. God, we ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
all.
We'll begin the committee reports with the Community and Economic Development Committee Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. and Chairman, Mr. Bill Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we have three reports this evening.
Mr. Swazer?
The first one, the committee met on October 1st regarding the recommendation of the Troy
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Planning Commission that the final plat of the Section 5 of the Fox Harbor subdivision
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
be approved.
Mr. Kendall?
The section is in general accordance with the approved preliminary plan.
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Plat contains 35 building lots, and it is the recommendation of this committee that
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
All members of council are present. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the October 1st, 2018, meeting
legislation be prepared, accepting the final plat of Section 5 of the Fox Harbor subdivision
of Troy City Council. Minutes of Council, October 1st, 2018.
as presented, including the dedication of the right-of-way.
The agenda was amended to include an ordinance.
Respectfully submitted, Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
The members of the Mayor's Youth Council were recognized or December 043, 2018, approving Are there any questions from council? the Kettering Health Network Troy Medical Center to replat was given first reading You may continue, Mr. Twist.
All right. The committee met on October 9th to provide a recommendation on the annexation filed on
and was adopted. Following various comments, at 7:40, council recessed into executive session, returned
behalf of Jane H. Delcamp for the annexation of 10.284 acres from Concord Township.
to regular session, and adjourned at 8:12 PM. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the
Will we accept the minutes?
annexation of the 10.284 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, known as the Delcamp
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to accept the minutes.
Annexation.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
That's respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Twist.
Yes.
Any comments or questions from council? Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger? You may continue.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Final report, the committee met on October 9th to consider the petition filed on behalf
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
of J&amp;B Properties of Troy LLC for the annexation of 6.1241 acres from Concord Township. This property is located on Union Street, just north of County Road 25A, and has the accounting zoning of 1-2 General Industry. Based on the state law section under which this annexation petition was filed and qualifies, there's a very short timeline for council to consider three separate pieces of legislation addressing what services the municipal corporation would provide to any parcel within the city, including the proposed for annexation, a statement of buffering requirements, and legislation consenting or objecting to the annexation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the J&amp;B Properties of Troy LLC, annexation of 6.1241 acres from Concord Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee does support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Any questions from council? You may continue.
All right. Final report, the committee met on October 9th to consider the petition filed on behalf of J&amp;B Properties of Troy LLC for the annexation of 6.1241 acres from Concord Township. This property is located on Union Street, just north of County Road 25A, and has the accounting zoning of 1-2 General Industry. Based on the state law section under which this annexation petition was filed and qualifies, there's a very short timeline for council to consider three separate pieces of legislation addressing what services the municipal corporation would provide to any parcel within the city, including the proposed for annexation, a statement of buffering requirements, and legislation consenting or objecting to the annexation. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the J&amp;B Properties of Troy LLC, annexation of 6.1241 acres from Concord Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee does support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The Finance Committee has the next two reports from Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on October 9th to provide a recommendation on the submittal of a grant application to provide nearly half the cost of the West Main Street Corridor Project Two, now estimated at 6.4 million. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service to submit a surface transportation grant application to MVRPC for the West Main Street Corridor Project Two, Phase Two, and to execute any subsequent documents if the grant is approved. Due to the timing, we support emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair.
Do any council members have any questions? You may continue.
Okay. This committee also met on October 9th regarding the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee to approve a loan from the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund to Shakris LLC in the amount of $100,000 towards the purchase of the building located at 2 East Main Street for the relocation and expansion of Heron's Market. The Loan Review Committee further recommends that the two current loans on 2 East Main Street be assigned to Shakris LLC. The term and condition of the loans are discussed in the detailed report. It is the recommendation of this committee that council support the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee and approves a new loan of $100,000 to Shakris LLC in the assignment of the two loans to P&amp;C Ventures LLC for the property at 2 East Main Street to Shakris LLC, so that the loans can be closed as soon as possible. Emergency legislation is supported, and this too is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Yes, Madam President.
And Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Titterington, I kind of hit on this at the committee meeting on this report, but the two loans that are outstanding that were made by P&amp;C Corp., were those exclusive to 2 East Main Street, or did they also incorporate 2 and 6?
At least one of them had 2 and 6, and so they're going to be reassigned so that they are with this project and this project alone, and any of the obligations of 6 will be eliminated or satisfied, I guess is a better way to put it.
And the portion that was assigned to 6, was that for the purchase of the building?
I don't have the specifics on that, but I believe that the loans were related to that. One of them was for roof repair, which I believe was on the larger building, which is the subject of this law.
Mr. Figueroa, do you have any other additions?
I don't know.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
Chairman, Mr. John Swazer has the next reports from the Law and Ordinances Committee.
Yes, Madam President. We have three reports tonight. On October 9th, this committee met to consider recommending that council oppose State Issue One, which will be on the November ballot. State Issue One is proposed as an amendment to the Ohio Constitution that would reduce penalties for crimes of obtaining, possession, and using certain illegal drugs, mandate the possession of these drugs be charged as misdemeanors instead of felonies, and would demean the seriousness of these offenses and shift the cost for drug treatment from the state to local government, thus having a further negative impact on the city budget. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, expressing council's objection to State Issue One. Due to the approaching election date, this committee supports emergency legislation. And this is submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council members? You may continue.
I have two liquor control applications. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of stock transfer of the existing D5 and D6 liquor permits for Ruby Tuesdays and Company, 1780 West Main Street. There is no change in the permit classifications. Objections must be filed by November 9th, 2018. The Police Department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the application.
Any comments from council? You may continue.
Thank you. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of transfer of the existing C1, C2, and D6 permits from Ordings Party Time and Company, 810 South Market Street, to JJS Lunchbox, 810 South Market Street. Objections must be filed by November 2nd, 2018. The Police Department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the application.
Any comments from council? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Safety and Health Committee has the next report from chairperson, Mrs. Robin Oda.
Madam President, we have one report tonight. This committee met October 1st to discuss the 2019 funding of the Miami County Health District. Troy's funding is based on the millage equivalent as paid by 22 of the 24 political subdivisions in the county for public health services. Troy's payment is funded from the General Fund. The 2019 Miami County Public Health funding would be $355,103.33, an increase of 1.4% over the 2018 funding. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the 2019 funding to the Miami County Health District for public health services for Troy citizens in the amount of $355,103.33. Respectfully submitted, John Twilliger, Brock Heath, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. The last report tonight is from the Utilities Committee and Chairman, Mr. John Terwilliger.
Thank you. On October 1st, this committee met regarding bidding authorization of the 2018 water line improvement project, budgeted in the amount of $500,000. These would be some of the undersized water mains identified for improvement in the 2014 Water Master Plan, with the location of the projects discussed in the detailed report. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2018 water line improvement project at a cost not to exceed $500,000, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Lutz, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Are there any comments from council members? Thank you. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber is our timekeeper. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to please read Resolution R.41, 2018. Resolution number R.41, 2018, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Miami County General Health District for Health Services. This would provide payment during 2019, $355,103.33, first reading. Are there any questions from council? Move to suspend.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Terwilliger to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R.42, 2018. Resolution number R.42, 2018, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for 2018 water line improvement projects, cost not to exceed $500,000, which is budgeted, first reading. Is there any discussion from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R.43, 2018. Resolution number R.43, 2018, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 6.1241 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the annexation, known as the D&amp;B Annexation, located near County Road 25A and Union Street, first reading. Is there any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R.44, 2018. Resolution number R.44, 2018, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 6.1241 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation associated with the J&amp;B Annexation, first reading. Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend on that.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R.46, 2018. Resolution number R.46, 2018, resolution expressing the opposition of the Troy City Council to State Issue One and declaring an emergency. This was discussed in the committee report this evening, first reading. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
This application was also discussed in a committee report this evening. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 48, 2018.
Resolution number R. 48, 2018, resolution approving the application Asharis LLC to assume the loan from the CDBG Loan Fund to PNC Ventures LLC and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. The emergency is so that the loan can be closed without delay.
Is there any questions from council?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Excuse me, suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read our final resolution of the evening, number R. 49, 2018.
Resolution number R. 48, 2018, resolution approving the application Asharis LLC for loan assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This is a partner piece of legislation to the previous resolution. Again, emergency requests is so that loans can be closed without delay. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read Ordinance 044, 2018.
Ordinance number 044, 2018, ordinance accepting the final plat of the Fox Harbor subdivision, section five, in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating right-of-way. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 045, 2018.
Ordinance number 045, 2018, ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing 10.284 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio. This is the final acceptance of the Dell Camp annexation. This is the first reading.
Are there any comments from council? Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read the final ordinance of the evening, number 046, 2018.
Ordinance number 046, 2018, ordinance amending ordinance number 030, 2017, as amended by ordinance number 019, 2018, ordinance number 021, 2018, and ordinance number 042, 2018. Appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio for the year 2018. This is one of the routine reappropriations through the year. This one is associated with the loan approvals. This is the first reading.
Are there any comments from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
There are not.
Mayor Bemish, do you have any comments this evening?
Just a few. First of all, big thank you to our community, including many around this table that participated in Mayor's prayer gathering. We had an inspirational speaker and everybody who participated, it talked about community and caring and it showed. And I want to thank everybody for their involvement and support. That leads to Pink Ribbon Girls. It's Cancer Awareness Month and the Pink Ribbon Girls will be on downtown this Friday night. There'll be a 5K fundraiser and many other displays and booths for us to participate in. So I would encourage you, it begins around 6 o'clock. So if you're so inclined, the Pink Ribbon Girls will be there in force. Again, I want to thank the Optimist Club and Main Street for organizing, as we have done annually, the traditional parade, costume contest, and the trunk and treat in downtown. That'll all take place on Saturday, October 27th in the morning. I think that steps off around, gets organized around 9:00, steps off about 9:30, and heads down to Proudy Plaza. So it's a good time. Get to see families and youngsters dressed all about. And then that just leads to a reminder, just so everybody knows, that Baker's Night is not Wednesday. It is on Tuesday, 6 to 8, and that's throughout Miami County. So that'll be on Tuesday, October 30th from 6 to 8. And I think that pretty much takes care of things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Teterington, do you have any comments this evening?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I have nothing to add, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Frigge?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. Any comments from city council members this evening? Are there any comments or questions from city staff this evening? Comments from anyone in the audience?
Madam President?
Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Don Hessler. I live at 142 Riverside Drive. And for the past three months or so, we've been working through a process with the city on an improvement project that they have planned to run on Riverside Drive. I prepared a briefing. One of the reasons I did that is because with all the conversations and all the activity amongst the residents, I would have been here for a long, long time, going through all the different aspects of what's going to happen and how it's going to affect our lives, and how it's going to affect our property and our property values as this, this project progresses. In the agenda, there are a couple of things that I, I'm not real explicit on, but the timeline essentially, when we were notified that we had to come to some kind of conclusion on what it is that we want to do with our properties and with the city, was around the end of July and beginning of August. That's when we started meeting with the city. And then we were updated through answers to the questions that we had at the July 31st informal meeting with a comment in one of the paragraphs that said that we need to make, make up our minds whether we connected into the sewer by the 1st of October, which is really a short deadline for all the things that had to be considered in, in our decisions. Some of the people had a pretty good idea of what they wanted to do, so that wasn't a hard decision for them. But for most of us, we've gone through a long, gut-wrenching bunch of discussions to try to figure out what would be a, a good solution for us and to look at the impacts on the city and the taxpayers of doing this. I tried to assemble most of those things that we discussed into this briefing. And I, some of it is a summary level, and there are a few places that are my opinions, but most of this is based on fact and based on things that we listened to and recordings of the, the council meetings and of the counties' meetings when they discussed the, the project itself. You know, I think one of the basic questions that we have is that, from a property owner's perspective, is you're planning to make changes, and this is a summary level, and part of our objective is to convince the council that this isn't in the best interest of the taxpayers, nor is it in the best interest of the city of Troy. And it certainly isn't in the best interest of the people living on Riverside Drive on the west side of the road. They're planning a road that has gutters and sewers and curbs, a green area that, I forget what they're calling it, some kind of a, a green space or a wood sidewalk or something. Whatever it is, they're going to plant trees and put grass between the road and the recreational trail. All of this is not, not even considering the disruption that's going to occur when, when they put this in. But that's going to put us in a position where we have curbs on both sides of the road, which is one thing that will necessitate the drainage. Right now, there's no drainage problem on that road at all. The only place that there's ever been any accumulation of, of water in the last 30 years that I've been there is that if we get a really heavy downpour, there will be a little bit of water in one corner of the road around the cemetery. That's it. No other problems. So I'll have a recommendation later in the briefing that, that addresses that, but we don't see any advantage to that. We've gone through the process of talking about how we're connecting into the sewers and who gets to connect and who doesn't. But it all made it together with different aspects, but we don't see how the city can plan a project like this. And it wasn't in a, totally in a vacuum because it was addressed a long, long time ago, but it was started back up a few months, more than a few months ago, and there was no real time to react to it. So I'm going, I'm going to get back on my script because I'll get off and do what I said this was going to prevent. We put down what we think that the city is trying to do. They, they want to build the road with the gutters and they, they want it to look nice, and nobody's against any of that, and they want to put in the recreational path. Now, as we talked to the city officials, we got the feeling, now this is my opinion, and I didn't market like that, but I'll tell you, is I feel like we're getting pressured to annex into the city to make things simpler on Riverside Drive. And the design itself looks like it's one that's going to allow for future lane expansion, which will lead to more right-of-way discussions. And my initial thoughts were that the right-of-way was really something that was reserved for roads and not to be used for something other than that. So a bike trail and a bike path didn't fall within that right-of-way in my estimation. Later on, through research in the last couple of weeks, I found out that there was some kind of a court decision that said that the, the people that owned right-of-way could use it for the public good. In this case, the city doesn't own the right-of-way, but they're using it for their supposed public good, and, and we can't see what that good is. So the, they're also incentivizing the people through the, the connection to the sewer free, which everyone else is required by the codified ordinances to bear the expense of that. And we don't understand how that really works. So is this an incentive, or is it just a way to achieve their end? So we question that as far as who pays. We also, we also hear talk and we've seen things, and it was, it brought a question to mind to me, is what, moving things through the council process and declaring emergencies seems to be something that restricts public input to some of these questions. And, and we'd like to see the council say, hey, you know, we need to, we don't want to run this thing through so fast and, and that we aren't able to consider all the alternatives. What we'd like to see, and really don't want to see, some of the residents would like to have access to the sewer, but they don't want to annex to the city. They want to stay in the county. We do that with our water right now. Some of the residents would like to see the bike path, but they don't want it on our side of the street. Right now, we have a sidewalk in a, probably somewhere close to 12 or 14-foot road. It goes all along the, the cemetery. And that's where the walkers and the carriage pushers and the bicyclers and the dog walkers, that's where they, they go right now. And to be quite honest, there aren't very many of them. We're not really sure whether putting a path through our front yards is going to create some kind of incentive for people to come to our side of the road. Right now, the people can cross at the four-way stop, and I'm sure that some of them do. But, you know, the, I'll talk about that in a second. That's another thing that they're looking at. And I don't think anybody on the street wants curbs. They restrict access to our properties. They might improve the looks, but when it comes to, there are times, when you're in a rural setting, you expect certain things. One is, if you have an overflow in your driveway and you want to park in your front yard, you get zipped into your front yard. This is going to limit that kind of access. It's going to cause a safety hazard as far as we're concerned. Anytime you try to jump a curb like that, you're, you're in for trouble. And one thing that we got that was kind of disturbing was that when we talked about putting the bike path on the other side of the road, the conversation turned to, well, if we put the bike path on the other side of the road, we're going to put the road right up to the edge of the right-of-way. So a veiled threat, we don't know, but if they did that, that would be worse to us than having a bike path, to have the road pushed all the way up to the edge of the roadway. Because that means we go through this eminent domain stuff again, where they want to capture another bufferway on the side where they want eight or 10 more feet to create a buffer space or to put in a sidewalk or something. So pretty soon, we're going to look like a Baltimore walk-up where we come down our steps and we step onto the sidewalk, just like on Main Street. And we, these other comments that we hear are a little, they're, they're not going to be disturbing because we do some of them tongue-in-cheek, but when you're, when you're speaking, you say, the city gets what the city wants, and that's coming from a city person. That's a little, you know, where do you go from there? You know, what alternatives do you have but to come to the elected official and say, hey, you know, this is what we're hearing and we need to know how to handle it? If you don't have the time to do that, though, you run into a problem. One of the big things that was brought up were the safety concerns. I looked at the safety concerns, again, on purpose because of the fact that that was one of the major reasons, that is a major reason for putting in a bike trail. And a bike trail is the major obstacle to us, is we just don't want that bike trail. But the safety factors that are cited are based on some statistics that they took on one or two very busy days. And I've done counts at a variety of different times. And on a busy day, a busy workday, I can't argue with a statistic that's, that's close to 1,200 cars a day. Of course, I don't know exactly the range, whether it was 16 hours or, or whatever. But even with that, using that, and then even using the number of people that they counted walking, the risk to people crossing the road two times, that's six seconds each time that they have to cross the road, is minimal compared to crossing 14 driveways each time they go up and down the road. The risk to the homeowners, our insurance companies are probably going to poke us in the eye as soon as they find out that that's the situation there. We're, we're in trouble again. The curbs, to me, curbs are usually a hazard. In this case, I think the curbs were engineered in to take care of the, the perceived water flow, you know, the perceived rain drainage problem. There's no drainage problem. Everybody on our street has dry basements. Even when it floods, we have dry basements. That's one of the benefits of being where we are. And for one thing, this, this is a recreational trail, so, and, and they've talked about it and about the maintenance. One thing is they fall apart. I've been on recreational trails before. Hardly anybody uses them. And as far as connectors, we'll talk about that in a second. But down at the bottom of that page, on page six, a casual crossing takes approximately six seconds. So if you're looking downhill and there is traffic, which there probably isn't, because you're going to almost always have at least a 45-second to 30-second interval almost all the time, just based on your own statistics, your own city statistics. The worst possible case is 12 seconds if you don't see a car coming up the hill and you're at the first crossing by the community park. That's the worst possible case. And if you see a car there and you come on out ahead anyway, then, then you shouldn't be walking on public pathways anyway. But that, to us, the, the six seconds to get across the road and having all the intervals, and I, I tell you, if you come out there and look, you're not going to see that kind of traffic. You're going to see it right when Riverside lets out or right when Riverside goes to work. And if you happen to be the accountant, traffic on a soccer day, or, you know, you're going to see more traffic than that, and I don't disagree with that. You may have to wait, so there are other solutions to that. One of them is channel things in a different direction or get them downhill and cross at the four-way stop. Most of the time, there's no, there's no wait at all, so it's a very low risk. Connectivity was the other thing that was cited as a, a hard justification for the trail. And, and that brings the question, who benefits from this? Does the taxpayer benefit from it? I don't think so. I've never heard of anybody going from here to Cleveland on a bike trail or a bike path. How many people are going to go between here and Pickle even? Nobody. You know, how many people have bicycles in their garage with all the good intentions in the world, never use it. They sell them at yard sale when they hit 65. The, the need for this just isn't there. And the maintenance and the upkeep on this, how it affects your budgets, how it affects your, your taxes, and just plain taking care of it is something that's, that's going to confront you sooner or later if you put that in. Now, as time changes, if you do see a need, I mean, right now, you're projecting it. They're projecting it on figures that they have from someone else or ones that they make up, just to create a scenario, not real figures. But we, now, that's my opinion because I don't have access to any studies that were conducted. I haven't seen, I don't have access to any cost-benefit analysis of doing this, or how the city might pay for it, or whether the city believes that it won't, won't even cost anything. We know that there will be two piles of snow in front of our houses with a bike pass instead of just one. We can dig out of the one. Okay, the rest of the stuff I mentioned all over, about the, the comments about moving the roadbed over to the, the west side. Now, some of the things that come up in that discussion is, what about the mailboxes? You know, there's going to be an increase, we think there will be an increase in just personal liability accidents with the people driving down the bike path on our side of the street. And then I mentioned that in my, now, I don't have the real facts on this, but just from observations when I've been on bike trails, bike trails don't hold up very well. They do require a certain amount of maintenance. They get potholes in them, they'll have sinkholes, they'll crack. We just don't see any, any real logic or real cost-benefit or anything to support that part of the project. We, we think we see a necessity because of the way the grants are done to get the road surface down and get the utilities upgraded when you have the money to do it. I mean, that makes sense. But to allocate more money to do improvements that you don't really need just goes beyond what we're used to seeing people do. what we're used to seeing people do. And then the eminent domain stuff. So, what I, in a conversation with some of the other people, some of the things I recommended was to resurface the road and install the utilities, using the current road bed, just like you have planned. Don't install the curbs and the gutters on the west side of the road. You don't need them at all. If you want to put them on the east side, that's your call. If you tip the road that direction, all the water's going to run into the cemetery. It's not going to flood anything. It's not going to cause anybody a problem. Just go pave the road, you know, and get it done with. The road wouldn't be in such bad shape if we hadn't had 10,000 60-ton dump trucks come down in the last couple of years with building some of the things going on in the city. When they tore down that Hobart Building, we had a constant stream of trucks on Riverside Drive every day. That beat the road up. Get rid of that, and you don't have a road problem. The other thing was, one thing that came up was the connection to the sewer. At first, it was, we couldn't connect to the sewer because there was a drainage problem. The next week later, the next meeting we had, well, you can connect to the sewer, but if you connect to the sewer, you have to annex to the city. But you'd be able to connect to the sewer later on at your own expense. That changed. And then it became, if you connect to the sewer, it doesn't matter who you are or when it is, you have to annex to the city. Now, I know that there were some residents that would like to connect into the sewer, and they don't mind footing the bill for it, but if they do that, then they're going to have pressure from the city, not pressure, it'll be mandatory that they annex. Now, we're not really sure where that comes from. We haven't seen the code that says you have to do this if you annex, you have to annex if you go up to the sewer. So, we don't know that, but we just wanted you to know that we saw that, and there are some people that would like to be in the, you know, be a good guy and say, hey, yeah, and get some service too. I mean, they don't mind that. All right, the safety and the connectivity, I just, I don't see a proven case to support that, those reasons for doing that. And really, that's about all I have, and I know that I hit on a lot of the things that some of our people talked about over time, but nobody has said, oh, let's go drag WHIO down here and run around the streets with signs and all that kind of stuff. We don't want to do that. We want to work out a solution, but so far, the solution has been the city telling us what they want to do and giving us a couple of options, but the options are all lean toward the city. Most of us are over 60, most of us are probably over 70 that live out there. Most of us just want to live out our life the way it is, do the things that we're used to do, used to doing. We spend most of our money in Troy anyway. You know, we don't, I don't think we tax the, you know, in a labor way or an expense way, the city of Troy by us being there. So, we would like to see the city and the city council say, hey, let's take another look at this and consider the things that residents have talked about and see if we can't come up with some position that's a little less impact, has a little less impact on the people that live on Riverside Drive. And I appreciate you giving me the time to say this and being patient while I spoke. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you, and thank you for the handout. Council will review this and take it into consideration. There will be a committee meeting, and it will come before council. So, if you keep an eye on what's happening on our website, or you can check with Mrs. Knight and get information on when the committee meeting will be coming forward. Anyone else in the audience have any comments?
My name is Robert Barnett. My wife and I live at 104 Riverside Drive, second house from the park. First of all, I'd like to reiterate that this isn't just going over a yard. It's going over 13 or 14 driveways in about the distance of a little over two football fields. Now, that to me really brings up some serious concerns. I'm retired from the Gummy County Sheriff's Office, and I've seen these kinds of accidents happen. One of our officers was involved in an accident just like what I'm going to lay out to you, and two people were killed. Now, after an event at Duke Park, people coming into town, traffic's backed up. Almost everybody, or somebody, will stop and make a hole for us to drive into our driveways. Now, we're not only driving into our driveways, we're going across the bike path that if there's a kid on a tricycle, we're not going to see it until it's too late. If there's somebody riding a bicycle going pretty fast, we're not going to see it, and they're not going to be able to stop in time. And we're talking all these different driveways where this could happen. And I've seen those kinds of accidents happen. And to me, that is much more dangerous than a crosswalk. A crosswalk, you can put flashing yellow signs, make the lines a little more prominent. And, yeah, and the fact that they're going to remove the sidewalk across the street during the fall and the spring, there's always kids running after school. I don't know if they're track or what it is. They're usually in their own clothes, not in a uniform, so they're just running. And there's as many as 40 of them at a time. Now, all of them are going to have to cross the street, and they're going to have to run on our side of the street. Now, can you imagine a line of 40 kids, maybe four or five feet between them, each one? How are we going to do it on our driveways? Some of us have to back out of our driveways. There's no other way. Some of us are going to lose parking spaces in front of our houses. So, in our case especially, we've got a one-car garage. If we want to use the other car, we've got to back out onto the street, stay on the street until the other car can back out. And I'm sure there's situations like that all up and down the street. I'll stop by saying, I don't think this is a good idea, and I think it's a lot more dangerous than the crosswalks. Thank you.
Steve Schmitz, 248 Riverside. I just have some clarifications. One, I'm not involved in the bike path part, but I want a clarification, if I annex in, they'll hook up the sewer for free? Yes? Then the other one is, as far as, will the curb, and everything go all the way to Duke?
Not as part of Phase Two. This project ends around Orchard Drive, so...
Yeah, okay.
Next year, we'll start designing Phase Three and look at...
And my other question for me, for my driveway is, when they do this, you know, towards Gilmore, on the road bed, have you guys looked far enough ahead how much it might be lowered? Because in my case, if you widen the road, you take 10 feet out, my driveway will go from a 10% grade to 15%. It's hard enough to get it up 10%.
It depends deeper, you're saying?
Yes.
So, right now, what we're talking about doing is lowering it 12 to 18 inches lower the road.
Okay.
So, it should make your situation better.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, another thing is for downtown, and I had seen Todd one day and was talking to him about it, for our crosswalks, you know how they use the signals at the schools, the flashers? I think it behooves the citizens to have that done because, as you guys know, I work at the fire department, and when we're running hot, it's not so bad because I'm sitting up and people are looking, but if we're just driving the truck, it's not too bad, but your personal cars, because all the stuff on each side, you can't see as well. You've got those pots in the center which are distracting, and if it's a busy Friday night or something, all the cars are parked there. It's hard to pick it up, and I really think since they're solar powered, you don't have to worry about running electric to them, at least the ones I've seen, I think can make it safer for people to cross because you still have people that have to stand there and wait because people don't pay that much attention. And that's it. Thank you.
Kevin Edkins, 102 Riverside Drive. Just a couple of things. The backing out issue is an issue for some people, I know it will be. There are hedge rows out there. When you're backing out, you know, you've got a hedge row. Well, you, at that point, you'd be backing out, looking, you're sitting on the bike path, looking to the hedge row or past the hedge row. It would be difficult for some. There are a few of those out there. Whether they remove their hedge rows, I don't know. Whether they want them removed, I'm sure Almeida doesn't want the one taken out that he's had there for 40, 45 years. So, you know, safety issues there. I wondered about the, it was brought up, I think, last council meeting, that the crossings at 25A, there's no issues with it at the county garage or anything with dump trucks going in and out and that. And I'm going, well, that's okay. Dump trucks aren't backing out onto 25A. They're driving out straight like a dump truck would. And, you know, the traffic out there is a lot faster, bringing the next point to the crossing at 25A and onto Eldine Road. People cross there, I assume, and the traffic limit or speed limit is 55 miles an hour or 50. And safety concerns here, we're at 35 or possibly 25, and I think if you're competent enough to ride a bicycle, you are competent enough to get to the point where I am at the first one right beside the park. If you're competent enough to get that far, you should be able to be competent enough to cross the street on your bike without having to have the thing moved over to our side of the road. The other thing is the park development. I know Duke Park is planned on being developed continually, and with more and more people, more and more activities going on out there, is there another point of exit other than coming back in? With right now, soccer tournaments let out, you've got people backing up all the way past my house, past Bob and Mary Jane's house, waiting on the four-way blinker. So, do you add a traffic light there to make the traffic flow, make another way out under the, I don't know if there's another way out, going to the north? But that's just another thing to consider. It gets quite annoying. I got assaulted out there this summer, backing out of my own driveway, and the traffic was stopped at my house. So, I thought, I'm safe, I back out. Guy coming down the road, leaving a soccer tournament, stops, gets out of his car, runs up and punches me. I'm going, that's going to hit me in the chest. And I said, all I was going to say, where were you going? You know, there's nowhere to go. The traffic's all stopped. And he runs over and hits me. So, that's nice. But had there been a light, you know, a regular light at Adams and Riverside, yeah, the traffic keeps going, you don't have those issues as bad possibly. But, yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, with traffic and people crossing at 25A out at Polings, and then, of course, over Eldine to the north, they seem to get by okay. I don't know if there's any records of anybody getting run over out there, crossing. If there are, I'd like to know about it. But that's about all I've got to say. I think, I think you get our point. We really don't want it. We want our thing. Maintenance, I know maintenance is an issue. Park department plows it. If they're going to plow it, and I live right beside it, and I know when they get around to plowing it, sometimes it's that day, sometimes it's the next day. They're busy plowing other parking lots within the city. The park department has a lot of park area to cover. They do the arena, and they do a lot of other things. Bike path's not a high priority. So, if you're crossing 13 driveways with a bike path, and the city goes by and plows, now it's this deep, hey, they're knocking that onto the bike path. Well, we come and go. Everybody comes and goes in and out of their driveway. That's packed down solid. So, now what are you going to do? The people riding their bikes, yes, they do ride them in 10 degrees or in the snow or whatever, but a lot of people still run. They jog, they run, they do all the activities on it. But if they're doing that, who scrapes it off? I'm not going to scrape it off. I plow with my own plow on my driveway, but it wouldn't be my responsibility to do the bike path probably. So, you know, even if I did my own driveway, there's still 12 more down the street that would need attention faster probably than the norm. So, something else to consider. There's just a lot of issues here that, it opens a can of worms that really, I don't know if you want to open. It's nice, it'd be handy, yeah, hook from one park to the other, but generally, when you're at the city park, municipal park, you're there for a reason. You're there to do a picnic or some kind of activity. I don't think, I don't know if they do, but I've never heard of anybody saying, hey, let's hop in the car and run down to Duke Park and see what's happening there. You go to Duke Park for activities. You go to municipal park for activities. Just because the two would have a connector doesn't necessarily mean it's a great idea. Even Tom, or, but Paul Duke's grandmother, granddaughter told me the other day that she thought it was a terrible idea. She said, I hate the, you know, I love the park because it's my grandpa, but it's a goofy idea. So, I'll let it in with that. Thank you.
My name is Mary Jane Heron, and I live at 102 Riverside Drive. I have just two things I want to say. First of all, if you lived where we live, would you want a bike path going across all of your properties so that anybody can walk within this distance right here from your front door when you are in the country, so to speak? You bought your property because you liked the country, but you didn't want to live far from the city. Well, it's going to be ruined, absolutely ruined. My second point is, if we all had million-dollar houses, would you be wanting to put a bike path in front of our houses? The fact that we all are middle-class, some retired, does not make it our responsibility to service your bike path going across our property. Thank you.
Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week. Meeting adjourned.